Good evening. I call the September 26, 2023 regular board meeting of the Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the agenda for the September 26, 2023 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Agostini, does that look good on the board up there?
It does.
All right, board members, please vote. Mrs. McFadden is not here tonight. She's at a conference, so she will not be joining us. The motion passes. We will move to item 3.1, executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the receipt of legal advice regarding social media litigation, student appeals, student admission into the district's adult ed program, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct on the screen? If that's correct on the screen, board members, please vote. Vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion passes. The board will now enter into executive session. May I have a motion to end executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we adjourned executive session at 6:18 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
It is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. Just for information purposes, Mrs. McFadden is at a conference tonight or today, and she will not be joining us. The motion passes. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I will ask Mrs. Lindsey Agostini to introduce tonight's guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight's inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance will be presented by Richland Northeast senior Sam Weiss. Sam is a journalist who enjoys theater and dance. He also runs the Jumbotron for R and E. After high school, Sam plans to attend a liberal arts college and pursue work in and around the theater. Sam is the son of two Richland Two graduates, Todd, an R and E alum, and his mother Heather, who's joined us tonight. She is a Spring Valley graduate. Sam.
It's on, okay. Hello, I was here last time, gave speech, and now a much different speech, to say the least. How does, this is only a fun thing I do, I could never do it professionally, turn into, I'm applying for one of the best arts schools in the entire Southeast, and you will see my name in lights. Well, simply put, Richland Two is why. Now, I went to an arts middle school outside of Richland Two where I worked hard on theater, but I never saw any fruits of my labor. I could sing, but not as well as others. I could dance, but not as well as many others. And I could act, but I never got anything to prove that. So I was left with the decision during my eighth grade year that I spent a while thinking about. Do I go to a school where I would have free transportation, thanks to my sister, be with my friends, already know some teachers, and could challenge and grow my brain like never before? Or go to a school where I would know nobody, but be able to continue theater at a higher caliber? Now, four years later, and here in front of all of y'all, I'm glad I went with the latter of the two. I was very close, though, to not doing it. And in ninth grade, I questioned why I even did it. I was a COVID baby, so my freshman year was online, then online and in person, and technically in person, but not really. And if any of you are confused, don't worry, so was I. I was close to quitting theater completely. My freshman IGP meeting, I said I was either going to be a therapist or a project manager like my dad because I started losing my love for theater. But Indira Kurtin Cummings and Charlotte Fletcher, who I see every day to this day, saved me from that. They didn't know it, they probably wouldn't have even realized if I didn't tell them this year. But their belief in me has allowed me to believe in myself to the point where I'm applying and hopefully going to one of the best arts schools in the nation. And I have to give credit to both my principal, Mr. Mark Sims, and my guidance counselor as well for helping me just believe in myself and showing me that, hey, this is something you can do. Now, if you would have told me when I first started high school that I was going to be doing this, I would have laughed at you. I will be honest, because this is something so far out of my comfort zone, but they've helped me understand that I can push that comfort zone and be here and speak in front of an audience like this and still get my point across. If I would have stayed at my middle school and followed their growing into high school program, I would have quit theater. If I went to my sister's school where theater wasn't as supported, I would have probably quit. But because of my Richland Northeast Palmetto Center for the Arts Theater teachers and the program they have inherited and continue to build, like Leah Michelle said, nothing will rain on my parade. I'd like to now ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We will now move to item 5.1, special recognitions of former board officers. If I can have Mrs. Lindsey Agostini, immediate past board chair, Dr. Monica E. Scott, immediate past vice chair, and Mrs. Angela Nash, immediate past secretary, come to the front. Ladies, we would like to thank you for your service as board officers for the 2022-2023 school year. Leading comes with a lot of responsibility and a lot of sacrifice, and we thank you for your willingness to step into these roles and to have faithful service to the students and staff as well as the entire Richland Two community. contributing not only to their time but their expertise and knowledge in helping Richland School District Two's board become purpose-driven and future-ready. We will now move to item 5.2, special recognitions of boardmanship. Established in 1982, SC-SBA, the South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute, offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national education issues. Tonight, we are pleased to honor two of our board members who have reached one of the six levels in the SC-SBA's Boardmanship Institute. Mrs. LaShonda McFadden is not here, but Mrs. Tamika Washington, would you please come New board orientation is the only state mandated training for board members. Board members earn points for participation in statewide conferences and on-site training in their district. Mrs. Washington has received Level One in the Boardmanship Institute, and Mrs. McFadden has reached Level Three, meaning that they are intentional about their ongoing professional development. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. McFadden and Mrs. Washington for this achievement, for going beyond what is mandated, and for demonstrating what it means to be a lifelong learner. May I have a motion regarding approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the September 26, 2023 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Mrs. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. We will now move on to public participation. One individual has signed up to address the board. We'll be given three minutes to address the board. Before we begin, we remind you that our meetings are live streamed and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive or vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. Our speaker tonight is Max Berg.
Good evening, Dr. Moore, members of the board. At the last meeting, I came here to speak about the issue of the attendance management system. However, the reason I stayed at the meeting was the topic being discussed of the issue of religious release. As the son of a mother who grew up in a predominantly Jewish household and a father who grew up in a predominantly Christian one, I believe everyone should be able to have the ability to practice their religious beliefs and be able to declare those beliefs. But I doubt that missing valuable instruction time is infringing upon these beliefs. That's why I think the answer is not to support the plan of taking students out of class, but to instead incorporate an option into the Wednesday late start system for high schoolers as an option for high school students to go to these places of worship before school. For those of you in the community who do not know, high school students are allowed an extra hour every Wednesday morning before school starts. Instead of early release, students would be better off to choose to start their days with religious instruction once a week using their time on Wednesdays. This works best because it allows students to both express themselves, but also allows them to focus on their academic advancement. This is a way to establish a solution that's not set students behind, and it also does not cost more time from overworked and undervalued teachers of our district. Of course, the issue of equality, especially since not all places of worship have the same resources, could be addressed in future discussion. This is a compromise, of course, and one that I'm sure that many will have complaints with. However, I think that this is best because it allows everyone to benefit in multiple ways. Teachers stand to benefit because they do not have to put additional work for students who are missing class. Students are able to advance themselves, yet are also able to express their religious beliefs. I think that this is the ideal solution to this issue that allows everyone to benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now vote on items discussed in executive session. May I please have a motion regarding the legal advice for social media litigation?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I move that the board retain the services of the firm of Wagstaff and Carmel and its team to take the actions necessary for the district to join the social media litigation now taking place in the federal court. Agreeing to join the litigation is a positive step for the district to take for the benefit and well-being of our students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Dr. Scott, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the student appeals?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to uphold the administration's recommendation for students one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to grant the appeal for student number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I need to recuse myself, not because of a conflict of interest, but because of a possible appearance of impropriety.
Thank you. Is that correct, Mrs. Nash? Is that correct now?
That is correct. Except for, yeah, it was seconded by you, Dr. Scott, is that correct?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one abstained, and one not present. The motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the student admissions request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students numbers one through nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, is that motion correct, Mrs. Porter, on the screen?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, one not present. The motion carries. I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to accept the district administration's recommendations for employment and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? The vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. We will now move to new business, no action requested. Each year at its annual business meeting, the South Carolina School Board Association allows delegates to vote on items of business. Delegates come from active member boards. The number of votes allocated to each board is based on pupil enrollment. Based on our enrollment, we are entitled to nine votes. We now need to select delegates and alternates to represent and vote on behalf of Richland Two. May I please have a motion for delegates and alternates for the number of votes each will represent?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Porter.
Is there a second on that? Is there anyone else that would like to nominate?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Washington.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mrs. Washington has been nominated by Dr. Scott and seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any other motions for delegates?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mc, Ms. McFadden, who's absent.
All right, Mrs. Nash has nominated Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second for that? All right, so we have, should we do these one? We should probably vote on these one at a time. It would be difficult to make motions otherwise. Is there anyone else that we would like to nominate, though? All right, so let's vote on the motion for Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Porter was nominated by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that it is okay to have three members vote as delegates and take three votes each on behalf of Richland Two.
Yes, I think that's what we prob, I mean, I think that's what we'll, it would seem logical at this point to me to see if all three people are, to vote on each, everyone individually, and then assign three votes each if all three are nominated, or not nominated, but are, if we vote in favor of those three. So let's do, okay, 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 let's, okay, here is the motion. All right, we will vote on Ms. Porter for three votes. Okay, motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Dr. Scott to have Mrs. Porter serve as a delegate with three votes. We'll do everybody one motion, okay, all right. Okay, we're going to start this over. All right, could we have one individual make a motion to nominate Mrs. Porter, Mrs. Washington, and Mrs. McFadden as delegates?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I would like to nominate Ms. Porter, Ms. Washington, and Ms. McFadden to be our delegates for the South Carolina School Boards Association delegate meeting.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there, we need to nominate, we need to nominate someone as an alternate. Okay, well, a motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Dr. Scott to have Mrs. Porter, Mrs. Washington, and Mrs. Nash, I mean, Mrs. McFadden, serve as delegates having three votes each at the South Carolina School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion on that while they pull that up? Is there any discussion on that while they pull that up? Mrs. Agostini, does that look like what we need to do?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. Do we have a motion to assign someone as a alternate for the same convention? May I have a motion to...
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
I nominate you, Mr. Trapp, as being our alternate for the South Carolina School Boards Association Delegate Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been... A motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Nash to delegate me as a alternate for the School Board Legislative Assembly. Is there any discussion? I would think three. I mean, but... The alternate would only take place if one of the three wasn't. Just one person. So, yes, three votes. Mrs. Agostini, does that look correct?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. We will now move on to item 9.2. The election of South Carolina School Board Asso... I'm sorry. The election of South Carolina School Board Association Officers and Directors for the 2023... 2022-2023 takes place at the Delegate Assembly Business Meeting, December 2, 2023, at the Legislative Advocacy Conference. Region Eight, which represents both Richland One and Richland Two, has one year remaining on the original four-year term. New officers and directors take their oath of office during the Delegate Assembly in December and begin their terms immediately. May I please have a motion regarding the selection of a candidate for the Region Eight Director?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
I nominate Nikki Porter to be the candidate for Region Eight Director for Richland Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Trapp?
Mrs. Porter?
I just want to say thank you for the nomination.
Mrs. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no, and one not present. The motion carries. We will now move to new business, no action requested. Item 10.1. The agenda item on this section is an update on attendance and seat time. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As requested, we're going to give an update to the board tonight on attendance and seat time. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Gregory and Ms. Abby Cobb. So Ms. Gregory is being shy. And so she's going to introduce Ms. Cobb. Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Good evening. Chairman Trapp, Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore. I would like to introduce the team that is going to present to you tonight. It will include Abby Cobb. Ms. Abby Cobb is our lead social worker. Ms. Penny Atkinson, who is our Executive Director for Secondary Instruction, and also Dr. Sabrina Suber, our Executive Director for Secondary Schools.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come to speak. There's been lots of information and lots of communication going on about attendance. So we wanted the opportunity to bring forward... We appreciate the ask to bring forward, to provide some clarification and hopefully do some education as well. So first off, starting off, there was a lot of communication. There's been lots of messages being sent out, and we're going to talk about why that is. But first, we want to address that the South Carolina regulation for attendance has not changed. We have not changed our board policy when it comes to the amount of absences and seat time that is required for students to get credit. We did make changes to the board policy recently. Those changes removed the ability to charge for seat time recovery, and it also removed the maximum amount of days that a student could recover for absences. So previously, we had a maximum. We had a cap in our board policy. So we took those two things away. So there isn't changes to our board policy regarding the number of absences. However, after multiple meetings with the State Department of Education and also working with our high schools to better align our schedules, we now know that we have to really have a consistent message and communication about absenteeism and the amount of required seat time for our high school credit. It's important to know that Richland Two is not making up these policies for ourselves and our own benefit. We are guided by lots of standards and lots of regulations in a multitude of areas. So this is just three of them that include requirements from the state level. The first is the South Carolina Compulsory Attendance Law. This is the law that legally requires children to come to school. It also gives us that magic number of 10. That South Carolina Compulsory Attendance Law is where that comes from. Then we have the South Carolina Board of regs regarding attendance. And if you look at these regulations, our board policy is really mirrored off of these regulations. And it says that we have to... Again, it gives us that magic number of 10. And it says we have to work with our families in order to address attendance concerns. We have to put interventions in place. It also spotlights that a student must have 120 hours of seat time in order to get that Carnegie unit. And then another one, in case where that's not enough. There's another one with our high school graduation requirements that, again, comes back in and really reiterates, again, you have to have the 120 hours of instruction in order to get high school seat time. So that's been the big conversation, a lot coming. But I think it's really important that we also look at attendance from a whole perspective. One of the reasons, as you're going to see here in a few minutes, that we are talking about attendance in a much broader and bigger scope is because of chronic absenteeism. Several years ago, across the country, schools, districts are required to track chronic absenteeism. We actually don't determine who's chronically absent. It's like an algorithm in the back somewhere that pulls out a student's attendance and determines whether or not they're considered chronically absent. The definition of chronically absent is when a student misses 10% or more of their enrollment period. So they could be enrolled in lots of several different schools within a school year. So you could actually be chronically absent at multiple schools. And all types of absences is included in chronic absenteeism. So even when we turn in medical notes, even when we turn in those parent notes, even when you're missing more than 50% of the day, federal guidelines include that when it talks about chronic absenteeism. The focus being on, yes, we do need to know why you're not at school, but you're still missing school. You're still missing the instruction. You're still missing that valuable time with your peers. And so that is what the focus of chronic absenteeism. So I'm going to give members of our board... I know that you know this, but also to our viewing audience, to take a look at our data. Back in 2017-18 is when all schools across the country were required to start reporting chronic absenteeism. So we've had some pretty significant jumps. Last school year... Well, two school years ago, '21-'22, Richland School District Two Chronic Absenteeism doubled. Doubled. When we think about just the significance of data increasing by 50%, we have to understand what a significant impact that is. And then for the last year, '22-'23, we still maintained, and we went up a little bit, by 1%. We haven't gotten our full report. The full report, the official report, will come out later on in the fall from the State Department of Ed, but 22%. So what does that mean? That means one in five Richland Two students missed at least 18 days of school for the last two years. That's a lot of kids. That's a lot of missed instruction time. That's a lot of missed time face-to-face with their teachers. That's a lot of missed time with their peers, learning how to, you know, do those soft skills, those social skills that we know are so important. And we also have to really understand 22% is our average for the state, for our district, and what this looks like at each grade level. So you see here, our ranges are very big. We go from 3% to 32%. How you address the chronic absenteeism needs for a school with 32 is very different from how you address it from a school with below 5, below 10%. And as you can see, the broad range going as much as 39%. Just this past week, Dr. Coleman and her wonderful ability to pull all of our data shared with us that out of these students, out of these 22%, 88% are pupils in poverty. 88% of those students, we know, are students who are living in poverty. So while the messaging, and it is so important for us to talk about seat time, it is so important for us to talk about our students, making sure that they get to class and they get their credit, we have a much bigger picture we also have to focus on. Because this is not just a high school issue. This is a completely pre-K through 12th grade. This is our data from last year showing us what were the top five grade levels of chronically absent. Our data is a little bit different than how it usually falls and tipped a little bit different from national trends. Last year, ninth grade was the number one. That's pretty consistent. Last year, 12th grade was number two. And I think our high school principals here would say the last couple of years, the seniors have been some challenges for us. 10th grade was the third highest. 8th grade was the fourth highest, and then kindergarten. So our babies, our five- and six-year-olds, who are there learning the foundations of what the rest of their academic careers are going to be, had some of the highest rates of chronically absent. And this data is, again, like I said, it's different. COVID has had some pretty significant impact. Typically, a typical year is ninth grade is the highest. 8th grade is typically the second highest. And kindergarten is usually the third highest. So we have to focus on chronic absenteeism and addressing attendance from all levels. Yes, we have to focus on seat time. Yes, we have to come up with plans to address students who need seat time recovery. It is equally important that we address chronic absenteeism for our kindergartners and our child development on up. So we bring all of this to just bring a bigger picture that we have to address absenteeism from a system-wide approach. We cannot just address it when we have concerns with one student. We have to take a tiered approach, which we are doing. We hired attendance interventionists who are working so hard with our schools, helping them look at their data, helping them to create those tiered interventions. But we can't just sit back and address it one student at a time. Just like you're going to hear in the data reports for the schools, we can't just address academic concerns one student at a time. You have to address it from a systematic approach. Our data is telling us we have to do things differently. And that includes our communication. That includes getting it out there in different ways, getting it out there in ways that we might not have done before. Because we have to focus on prevention. We can't just be reactive. We are still very much in a reactive mode. We have to continue to move forward with prevention because we can't do this work by ourselves. Richland Two did not get to 22% chronically absenteeism by ourselves. We are not unique. We are actually below the state average. So if we just think what that means, we are below the state average compared to a lot of other school districts in this state. It's not just our students. We can all walk out here right now and see a "now hiring" sign almost everywhere. There is a cultural shift that has occurred. The fact that we have 12th graders being the second highest that are chronically absent, we have a cultural shift that has occurred. And we can't do this work by ourselves. Flyers, videos, as much as Dr. Moore and I love doing those videos, that's not going to change our culture. We have to address it by the community coming together to reinforce that it's essential for all students to be at school all day, every day, to be successful. So I'm now going to pass it on to Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Moore, again, thank you for this opportunity. Our marketing experts tell us that we have to hear and see something 21 times before we remember it and before we understand it. So that is why it is so important that we continue to have this conversation with our community in Richland Two. And believe it or not, we have other Midlands districts that are also having this same conversation right now. Several of them have shared their videos. As Dr. Moore put out several for our district, we have other Midlands districts doing the same thing. So again, our community has to come together with this particular battle. This is, again, is going to be a little repetitive. State Regulation 43-172, as Ms. Cobb mentioned, there are multiple regulations that talk about attendance and seat time. But according to the South Carolina Department of Ed, a high school credit course has to have 120 hours of seat time. All five of our high schools have 120 hours of seat time for a one-credit course. We also have half credits. So we have a half-credit course. We have to have 60 hours of seat time. All of our high schools meet that requirement. Sometimes we just have to see some examples. As a parent, as a teacher, as a learner, I like to see examples. So I have three here for you and for our viewing audience. Example one, we have a junior taking biology for a semester block class. That means the class is from August to December, and that class meets every day for 90 minutes. The student misses seven days. The state regs say that student can only miss five days in the semester class. So that student needs to recover, attendance recovery, two sessions to be able to pass the class with the attendance regulation. Let's say we have a senior who is in a year-long psychology class. This class is year-long, and it meets 44 minutes every day. The senior misses 13 days. State regs say that in a year-long class, only 10 days can be missed. So this senior needs to make up three days of seat time. So this senior needs to make up three days of seat time. And the last example, a freshman has a year-long English class. The student misses 10 days. The state says in a year-long class, you can miss 10 days. So this student does not need to attend attendance recovery. Now, the student may need to make up some assignments, but as far as attending attendance recovery, that student would not need to do so because they are within the amount of days that can be missed. And now I believe Dr. Suber is going to finish this up.
And so what are we doing? We are trying to provide as many opportunities as we can for the kids to make up their time. And so as you can see, we offer attendance recovery all throughout the year. In the past years, we'd offer it at the end of the semester, the end of the nine weeks. But what the high schools are doing now, they are giving this opportunity the entire year. It's offered both face-to-face and virtual. Before school, after school, before late start. So that person wouldn't get a late start, but they get an opportunity to make up their time. And even this year, we have added Saturday school. Now, each site has their own set of times, so it will vary from school to school. But a parent just simply needs to call the school to find out when they're going to be offering those opportunities. In fact, I just sent the principals a text message the other day to say, hey, is there a way, you know, that we could do this two more days? And so instead of doing it Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, is it possible that we could do this Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday? So as you can see, they're by no means, those high school principals back there, they want their kids to graduate. They want them to get the Carnegie units. And so we have, as a team, we have decided that we're going to give them every opportunity that they can. Do we want them in school? Absolutely. But do we understand that there will be sessions, therapy sessions, somebody will get sick, or whatever those cases are, there could be death in the family? We have things in place that would allow them to make up that time. And so that brings us to the end of our presentation, and we will take questions.
Board members, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
First, I have a comment, and I want to say thank you to the team as well as to the high school principals for offering this throughout the school year. So there is no reason, no excuse, that parents or students can have because we have this accommodation in place to make sure that they are successful for school, after school, Saturdays, Monday through Thursday, face-to-face or virtual. I mean, it's there for them. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to go back to a slide that Mrs. Atkinson did. And just for the viewing audience, can you go back to that slide that talks about, just lost my thought, oh, verified and unverified? Just, okay, that was Ms. Cobb, okay, thank you. Just so parents can understand what we mean when we say verified and unverified absences.
Thank you. That is a great point to bring up. One of the things that's really important, when you look at the laws and the regulations and standards, they typically use the language lawful or unlawful, or excused and unexcused. And one of the things that we have done as a district is language is important. And so we have been using the language verified and unverified because really, to say an absence is excused, we don't have the authority to say, you don't have to be here today. And so we've really used the language verified and unverified so that we have our language represent, we know why that student was not at school. Also, the law and the standards using excused and unexcused has created the understanding that if an absence is excused, it doesn't count against you, and that's incorrect. And so we felt like our language of using verified and unverified clears that up. By the language excused, again, we're just saying, we understand you've provided documentation why your child is not at school, but it's still an absence. If I had a conversation with a parent today, if the student is not in our building, they're an absent. We can't change that, but we can use a code that reflects why they were not there. So does that help kind of with that language? Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
Thank you again for your presentation. I wanted to make three points. One, in the agenda meeting, I also heard Dr. Moore give an explanation. But one thing that I feel it's important for us to hear also is for COVID, that that's a virtual makeup and it doesn't count.
That is correct. So the State Department of Ed has provided guidance that if students are impacted by COVID, so if they're providing the proof, whether there's a, I can't say this word very well, attest, there's a form that parents can fill out to verify that their child is COVID-positive, or turning in documentation to the nurse. Our nurse will then communicate to our attendance secretaries, and the State Department of Ed gives guidance that we can code that student virtually present. So if they are positive for COVID, we can code them virtually present. It's called VTP, so it's actually a present code, not an absence code. But the State Department of Ed is the one who says we can only do that for COVID. We cannot do that for strep throat or flu. It is just COVID.
Okay. And then the second point was that not all students can automatically get homebound if they ask for it, that they must qualify for it, and there are some specifications for that, right?
Absolutely. So in order to qualify for homebound, you have to be absent eight consecutive days. And there is a process where the medical provider must fill out a homebound application. And once that application is turned in, the homebound team at the schools review it to determine if it's an appropriate decision to move forward with homebound. So we have two homebound coordinators in our district who look at those applications and work with the school teams to determine if homebound is going to be approved or not.
And then my last point, and this one I don't necessarily agree with in a way, it's the seat time after five absences you have the opportunity to make up. And I just want to clarify my thought process in this. We have this saying that you don't meet just to meet, right? I also feel that with our students, if they're absent and they miss that class time, that they shouldn't have to wait over the course of multiple quarters to make up that time. So, and we already have the data that shows what students are likely to miss time. So there are some who know they're going to meet that five. I dislike our students having to wait for five absences to make up because ideally, if they're trying to make up the coursework, they're going to put in that time, in that week, maybe the next week. I think that should count towards their attendance, and it might clear up some of the frustrations with students having to make up time after they've missed the time.
So that is a stipulation from the State Department of Ed that sets the regulations for the requirements for seat time recovery. So seat time recovery not only requires you to make up the time, but you have to be recovering in the content that you missed. And I think an important point to point out is, I completely understand that logic, and I hear our students when they talk about that, but if day six is what you've missed and what you're having to make up, the intention is that you're going to make up content from day six, not content from day, you know, day two that was three weeks ago. So that's more of the point of making sure that they're trying to recover the absence and the content that was missed for that time, that time period. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I have a few questions. So in this content recovery, when we're talking about the face-to-face or virtual, who is actually providing that instruction?
That will be Richland II staff. So it will vary from site to site, but there's lots of different programs, so whether it's teachers or some of our other staff that our principals are arranging.
Okay, so they're going to sit there and repeat a class for an hour that the student missed?
No, it's not repeating instructions. The students will need to come in. It depends on the option. So they can go to after-school tutoring, and after-school tutoring could be with that particular teacher. And so then they're going to be working one-on-one. It could be going, and there is a staff person providing that timeframe, who will be visible and be available, and the student will need to come prepared to work on the content from that particular class.
Okay, so not necessarily instruction. But let me ask, in that sense, when we're talking about the tutoring, I know at Spring Valley, my kids, that's where they went to high school, offered peer tutoring. Does that count? And why or why not?
That's a great question. I don't know of a state reg that does not count peer tutoring. What we have to make sure that we do is that we count the time that the student is recovering. We possibly could have peer tutoring within, you know, a Tuesday, Thursday session, depending on how many students are there recovering their time. So that very well could be something that we use. We just have to make sure that we have documentation that the student has recovered that seat time. That's why the Tuesday, Thursdays, and the Saturday, or the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, virtually, we are going to use Edge Annuity, which is our virtual platform the district has. And that puts a timestamp when the student checks in and when the student checks out. And then, of course, each high school will have someone that's monitoring the virtual check-in and checkout. And again, it's all about the record-keeping. But I've never seen anything that says peer tutoring cannot be used, but we also would want to make sure we had an adult monitoring that time with the peer.
Okay. And I'm not exactly sure how it operates. My kids have tutored and benefited from being tutored. They generally do it during study halls, but I'm hoping that's something that we can look into an option and work with the high schools so that the kids can get credit for that. Another question that I have is, you know, when we're looking at the data and how, do we dissect it any more other than to say it's grown, I mean, or doubled, the chronic absenteeism in one year? Did we look and find out why? You know, we've talked about COVID, but what made it do that?
Well, I think, one, 88% being in poverty is the number-one indicator in risk factor that we're looking at there. And poverty, you can't just summarize that and say that that is the reason, but there's so many other layers within that situation, whether it's parents, you know, are having to work two jobs and our students are spending less, or more time unsupervised. If a student misses the bus and they don't have a ride to get to school, many times our students unfortunately might be responsible for helping their younger siblings get on a bus, and then their accountability for themselves might not be at that highest level. So we don't have it broken down, and it's not really possible to break down the data from a systematic level to say, here are the causes. But that's where our interventions come in. When we are working one-on-one with students, we are identifying what are the barriers, and then putting interventions that are unique to those barriers. So we can't address it from a systematic to say, 20% were this, you know, another 20% were this. But that is when we are working with those individual kids, identifying the barriers. That's the exact point of the attendance intervention, is to identify the barriers and address interventions that are unique to that.
Okay. The comment was made that there were two minor changes changed to the policy. One of the changes that we, in my opinion, seemed to be major was the words from may to will. High school students who exceed five absences in a semester course or 10 absences in a year-long course, it used to say, may not. Now it says, will not. To me, that seems to be a significant change. To me, before, it seemed like there was the option, especially, you know, if the kids are on track and doing really well, that they would get the credit. Now we're saying, nobody gets the credit. I mean, you've got your, you know, all-A student who, you know, well, we've ruled out COVID, but has that strep throat two or three times a year. Now we're saying, because you were sick, you won't get it.
So that is what the regulations are really telling us, and the State Department of Ed is telling us, that regardless of the reason why you're out, you still have to focus. Like the policy, or excuse me, one of the standards says, regardless of the amount of absences, you still have to meet the 120 hours. And so that is just the guiding factor of awarding high school credit is the 120 hours.
All right. And then what about kids that miss school for athletics, for, you know, the band performances? You know, they're missing three or four days because they're going and playing at different places. How are we working with that?
Those would be a field trip or an activity, and those are not an absence code. They're with a Richland II activity. That's considered a field trip or an activity, and those aren't considered absences.
Okay, so when the teacher goes in and says that they're not there, it'll be corrected?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my final comment is, I knew that it's, you know, we've said it's systemic, but then we've also talked about it's more geared toward the 88% of the students in poverty. The way that it's come across, and just from hearing from the community, the people that are really paying attention to how we've messaged it, and I'm going to say, I'm not on board with how it's been messaged, it's our high performers that have really taken it to heart and are really upset about it. And you've got your kids that, you know, are, you know, top-ten at our different high schools, and they need a counseling because of anxiety and other things, but they're not going. You know, we had a public speaker come and talk about how she knew a kid. I knew the boy that went back to high school after he had his wisdom teeth pulled just because he was told he couldn't be absent. So, you know, how do we work with that messaging? Because I realize it's a problem, but somehow we need to tone it down and get the message to the right people.
Well, and that is really that approach, again, from coming that tiered level, is tier one is our universal. And one of the most common things is communication when it comes to universal. And so with being honest, we haven't communicated at this level where we were before. And so that's one of the first things we have to do. I know the high schools really focused on reaching out to all of their students and talking about seat time requirements. We started doing it with eighth graders last year. So I agree, it's a challenge of how we get the message. We have all said, the concerns that are being brought forward are not likely those kids who need the message as much as others. And so it is continuing to be a need with us to figure out how we work with our parents and our students to make sure they're getting the message. We have to try all of it. And so we recognize that. It's just, we have to continue to provide those tier-one universal where we're giving that information to all.
Can I also add, Chair, that we did meet with our Health Advisory Council last week, and we discussed attendance was one of our major topics. And so explaining to our partners in the health profession, they all walked away from that meeting with a better understanding and clarity around the policy and why the policy is in place. And now they are taking that message back. So they did not get the backside of the flyer that Abby Cobb provided to the schools, but they now understand that there are multiple ways, as Dr. Suber and Ms. Atkinson have talked about, for providing students with that option. We do not want students coming to school sick. That is not our goal. We don't want students missing critical appointments. What we would ask parents to do is to be very strategic around those absences that they know are planned. For example, going to the orthodontist, we don't have to always go at 9:00 a.m. and miss the same class over and over again. Be strategic about setting your appointments. And what Dr. Greenhouse shared with us is that multiple healthcare providers do provide alternate times. And the representative from the mental health community actually told us that he will change his language, what he tells parents and students, that it's okay, you can just go home for the rest of the day. He said, no, he will not tell them to do that anymore because he understands now the requirement that the state has in place for students to make, to have, to meet the requirement for seat time. So that meeting was very beneficial in helping to get the word out, since these are the people that are providing services to our students. I will also say, just for parents' benefit, we post our calendar 15 months in advance. So parents have adequate time to plan vacations and other activities and events. So parents, I love vacations. My spouse will tell you that. But please plan those vacations appropriately within the timeline that the district calendar has put out for our students. Because we do put it out 15 months in advance for that purpose. The last thing I will say is that we have worked really, really hard to ensure that we're providing a quality education every single day for each student that we have the privilege to educate. It is extremely important that we have our students in school. We recognize the fact that there are multiple things that students are dealing with, and there's a lot of pressure on our students. We are very, very sensitive to that, but we need them to be in school. And I want to say thank you to our principals that are here, that are providing multiple avenues for students to make up time. Because they are asking their staff to come in early, stay late, work on Saturdays, to monitor Edge Annuity, to do these things because, not just for graduation rate, but because they care about every student that is in their building, and they want every one of those students to be future-ready and to graduate with their diploma, ready to take on other options past the time that they get to be with us. So, Mr. So, Mr. Chairman, if we don't have any other questions?
Any other questions, Board members? Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. So you talked about a call for community support, and I agree with that. Can you tell me some of the additional methods that you all have begun to explore, to develop or to explore, to help us as a district address this with the community?
Sure. So we, as Dr. Moore mentioned, we are doing the Health Advisory Committee. We also have already presented this year to the Parent Advisory Committee. For the last couple of years, myself and Maria Owens have been co-facilitating the NERMA, our ministerial alliance, and we have presented our attendance data to that group as well. As well as, you know, when people come forward, anytime we're talking to community providers, it's been an area where we're really trying to get that message out there. I think that that is something we really have to focus on because our young people graduating who are chronically absent are going to be our workforce. And so we need workforce to come in and help us address this issue as well. If you guys have looked at Twitter during the beginning of September, we had our Attendance Spirit Week. It was my favorite thing to do. Every night I went home and looked at Twitter and tried to, you know. And so we just had a meeting this morning with the elementary attendance administrators, and they went around and spoke about the best thing and just how excited kids were. So many kids said they wanted to come to school to participate in the Spirit Week. And so just that level of community outreach to our students, to our parents. Many of them said that parents, during the car rider line, were talking about it, saying, hey, what's tomorrow? So that communication also, not just going to our parents and our students, but also going out to our community, is a big piece. And it is something myself and our attendance interventionists are going to continue to look at because we have to continue to take it to other levels besides those partners who are always with us.
And could I add something, Mr. Chairman? I met last week with our student leaders from our high schools. We actually looked at the policy. They read the policy. One of the things they said to us, and Dr. Suber was there with me, was that they had never seen the policy. And communication was something they said, we would like to have had this and understood the why behind the state laws. And then the last part of that, which was very exciting to me, was how can we advocate about that? And that, to me, was the best thing that came out of our meeting. Because what I charged them with is, your voice is powerful. When you speak, people listen to you, much more than they do the adults. So if this is something that you don't agree with or you feel needs to be updated, because one of the things they realized is, the laws that we are using from nineteen-seventy-six. That is the law. Nineteen-seventy-six. Some of them were wondering who was born at that particular time. I was one of the people in the room that was born at that particular time, or before that time, I should say. So that was one of our other groups that we met with.
And I would love to just say that if there are groups out there who want presentations, we'll be happy to go out there and do that as well.
Yes. And I'm glad that you said that because when we think about eighty-eight percent of our students in poverty, we have to think about where are those parents? They're not coming to your parent advisory meetings. They're not coming to your board meetings. And so we have to be very strategic in going out there. There, you know, some of them are not even showing up at churches. They're showing up at neighborhood meetings and different things or events and kids' sports games and things like that. And so I think that we have to be very intentional if we're going to talk about this eighty-eight percent and how are we going to reach them beyond? They're not on Twitter. You know, they're coming to school and they're excited about those type of events. And so I think we have to be intentional. But I'm really glad to hear that the department is thinking about outside of the box, outside of the school. How do we reach them? And then my last question is, what did we do last year and the years before that had everybody in an uproar? And did we allow, because of the pandemic, you know, ten unexcused and ten excused absences, as I've heard? What was it before that really caused that confusion? And I wanted to know if it was attributed to the pandemic.
Thank you for that question, Ms. Washington. If you remember during the pandemic, the State Department relaxed a number of regulations. One of the things they did, one of the regulations they did relax was seat time. They also, of course, gave us, as Ms. Cobb has said, several different codes when you were quarantined or if you had COVID. So, you know, we went through two years of that. And now, of course, we are getting back on track because all of those regulations are now back in effect.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, everyone, for your presentation. Next on our agenda is a report on high school achievement data. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Gregory is back. And before I turn it over to Ms. Gregory, I do want to thank Mrs. Cobb, Dr. Suber, and Ms. Atkinson for their presentation on attendance and seat time. And so at this particular point in time, I'm going to introduce Ms. Nancy Gregory, our chief academic officer, and she's going to introduce the rest of our team that will be presenting our high school assessment update.
Well, good evening again. Chairman Trout, Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore. I'd also like to recognize our high school principals are here tonight, so thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight, we're presenting the high school achievement data, end-of-course data for Algebra I, English II, Biology, US History, and results of the South Carolina Career Readiness Assessment. You may remember that in the past, we've shared EOC data and grad rate at the same time. We're not going to be doing that tonight. We won't share the grad rate tonight because that information, you may remember, is embargoed by the state until October the tenth. We look forward to sharing the grad rate data with you a little bit later, once the embargo has been lifted. Tonight, Dr. Jennifer Coleman, Executive Director for Accountability, Research, and Evaluation, will begin our presentation by sharing the twenty-two, twenty-three achievement data on EOCs. She will be followed by Ms. Penny Atkinson, Executive Director for Secondary Instruction. Ms. Katania Davis will join us, Chief Special Education Officer. And then Ms. Jennifer Kane, our Director of College and Career Initiatives. They will share actions and additional information from their respective areas addressing the corresponding data. There you are. Just looking for you. What she will hear tonight is that we are seeing continued progress with EOCs, results of some intentional work that is coming out of COVID. Efforts have been strategic and focused. The issues we discussed at the last board meeting, you'll hear about again tonight, chronic absenteeism and teacher shortages. They permeate these scores. You're going to see the impact. We can't look at these scores tonight in a vacuum. You're also going to see, from Ms. Kane, as we mentioned, the new South Carolina Career Readiness Assessment, and you're going to learn a little bit about it tonight. And we're excited about the work that high school principals have been doing in collaboration with our academics team. And those efforts are moving the needle in the right direction. So let's dive in, starting with Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Well, good evening. We're going to start off talking about the end-of-course examination program, and we'll just begin with a little bit of a refresher about why do we have to give this assessment? This is actually a pretty historical assessment we've given in the state of South Carolina because it was mandated by the Education Accountability Act, which was passed in nineteen-ninety-eight. And what that state reg said is that we were required to give benchmark courses in science, English, math, and social studies, and end-of-course exam. So for us, that is Algebra I is considered the benchmark hallmark course for math. English I was the original EOCEP that we took for English, but that has been switched to English II, Biology, and US History. So we'll dive right into the scores. And you can see that the way that the EOCEP is scored is that students receive an A, B, C, D, or F. And the result of the score on the end-of-course assessment is twenty percent of their final total overall grade. So this is usually one that gets kids' attention, right? Because it has a big impact on what their final grade ends up being in the assessment. So you can see the distribution by grade, the percentages in each of the grade levels for each of the subject areas on the screen. So let's dive into Algebra I a little bit. This has been a bit tricky for us. And we've acknowledged in the previous presentation that we, coming out of COVID, we are still dealing with some math deficits from children. So the good news is, is that we are seeing an increase, which we're going to call the rebounding, from the previous year with the two percentage point increase in students who are passing that assessment. You can see that we are above the state average for students passing Algebra I. The thing that we're still not quite getting is the recovery, right? So we have not completely recovered from where we were pre-pandemic with our passage rate for Algebra I. You've seen this graph probably more times than you care to, but I want to make sure that we continue to watch because I think from a data perspective, it's very interesting to watch this and watch the progression of kids as they're moving through and the impacts that we're having. So these are our three COVID bubbles. So we know that when we talk about itty-bitties, who are now our first, second, third graders, they have massive reading deficits. And we're watching that nationally, and we're watching that in our data, and we're talking about that daily with principals. We talked about those kiddos who are one through eighth grade when the pandemic started have math deficits. So here's why I'm bringing this up to you again. So you think about when the pandemic started. Where are those kids now? A good portion of them are starting to matriculate into high school, which is why we're continuing to see those math challenges. And we're watching it closely, but we know that this is going to be a big mountain for us to climb with our students as they're starting to enter high school, those who were in the pandemic in middle grades. For our biology scores, we did see a four percent increase, and we are very glad to see that. That rebound is beginning to happen with our biology passage rate. We are still not quite to recovery where we were pre-pandemic, and we are below the state average for passage on biology. For English II, I want to say some caution with this. When we had a dip of less than half a percent of students passing this assessment, this doesn't alarm me a lot. And here is why. Because we already do have about eighty-five and a half percent of our students passing this exam. That's a really high passage rate. You can see we're above the state average. And although we do want to continue to see those scores increase, I don't know that a point-four percent dip is too much of an alarm that we do want to acknowledge that. There is no five-year change because five years ago, we were giving Algebra I as our EOCP. US History, English I, thank you, Ms. Gregory. US History, we did see an eight-point-eight-seven percent increase in our passage rate, and we are very glad to see that. You can see we doubled what the state increased. So we are catching up to the state, even though we're just slightly below them, and we're still working on that pre-pandemic recovery in US History. Confounding variables. One thing that I find really interesting, and one of the reasons I'm drawn to data, is it really paints a picture. And you can't paint the picture of just presenting test scores without talking about the major things that are impacting education, not just in Richland II, but across the state and nationally. It's very good luck that I get to follow the team that was before me talking about chronic absenteeism. It's really difficult to stress the impact that this is having on our academics. When we look at our high schools, our chronic absenteeism ranges anywhere from twenty percent to almost forty percent. All right. So imagine that you are the principal of the high school on the high end of that range. You have a thousand-plus kids in your building. That number tells me that forty percent of your kids are missing more than ten percent of their instructional days. I don't care how much magic you have in the world. I don't care how highly qualified your teachers are. I don't care how good of a building-level leader you are. I don't care how good our resources are. If almost half of your kids are missing ten percent of their instructional time, that is going to be a very big task for us to overcome. And that's why we're going to continue to ensure that we're talking about it. Teacher shortages are unfortunately a reality for all districts across the nation right now, in particular when we talk about those very critical subject areas, math, science, special education. One thing that Dr. Moore brought to our attention, being a former science high school teacher, that we do want to mention here, is science certification at the high school level is a little weird, right? So if I were an elementary science teacher, I could teach all, any grade in elementary, right? Ms. Gregory happened to be science-certified in middle school. She has a little bit of a bigger range in South Carolina. She can do K through eight with her certification. Dr. Moore was a chemistry teacher, correct? Did I get it right? Okay, good. I would like extra points for that. In high school, in high school, Dr. Moore could only teach chemistry. If you had a physics vacancy, if you had a biology vacancy, I think she'd be a great teacher in either of those subject areas. However, the way certification works in high school is you have to be a subject area expert in the area that you are teaching in. So Dr. Moore could only teach chemistry classes. I probably shouldn't have said that because if we have a chemistry vacancy, somebody may be calling you to come and teach a few lessons.
And I do have a degree in biology, so I could apply for certification.
Duly noted. Thank you, ma'am. All right. So in addition, we've talked about shifting resources. And one thing that we've also seen as the pandemic is coming to a close is we are seeing, with the teacher vacancies, with teacher absences, there are times that we've got to shift our resources to cover classes while we're in the school day as well. All right. This is a confounding variable we haven't talked to you all about, but I really think is critical for us to know. Having come from a high-poverty district prior to coming back to Richland II, this was something I was very interested in, and it's mobility rate. So I want to explain a little bit about what that means when we talk about mobility rate. So essentially, in the accountability world, if you talk about mobility, it is how often does a kid move in and out of your building? In a year. Okay. So if I'm enrolled at Westwood High School, but we move, and we now go to R and E, I'm considered mobile for both of those schools, right? Because I have come in or out during the hundred-and-eighty days of instruction. So we've got a four-year trend. This is when we started tracking this data. And one thing you're going to notice, first of all, nineteen-twenty's not on here because everything kind of shut down in nineteen-twenty. But one thing I want you to notice is that we have had varying and increasing mobility in this district. This will dovetail into Dr. Moore's presentation later, where we are seeing an increase in students who are in poverty in this district. Students in poverty move more frequently than students who are not. So we're now looking at a district average of eighteen-point-six percent mobility during the twenty-two, twenty-three year. That means that of our entire student body, eighteen-point-six of them entered and exited our schools during that year. When you look at the high school level, and this is really important for us to grasp, that range goes from twelve-point-seven to twenty-six-point-seven. So if you are the principal who is at the high school, who's got twenty-six-point-seven percent mobility rate, that means that more than a quarter of your students move in and out of your building within a year. This is a challenge for us, and it's going to continue to be a challenge. As we're watching our national budgeting issues, as we're watching recessions, as we're watching things happening, I think it's a safe bet that we will likely see this number increase. And I will turn it over to Ms. Atkinson at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Moore, I'm going to share with you what has been going on in the academics team in reference to our EOCEP scores. And again, I also want to thank our high school principals for being here tonight because we are a team with academics and our high school principals, along with their assistant principals, of course, and their instructional staff. This year, we are maximizing instructional time. You heard that same phrase with the elementary and the middle school presentation at the last board meeting. We are specifically maximizing instructional time in our EOCEP courses. All five of our high schools have moved those courses to a block schedule. So that means in a block schedule, they have algebra for a semester, and a minimum class is eighty minutes. So instead of having algebra all year long for forty minutes, they now have it for at least eighty minutes. Some of our high schools have ninety minutes. So think about the different ways a teacher can instruct during that extended period of time. The majority of our courses, as I just said, are on a semester schedule. AP US History is an exception. And you may be thinking, well, why is it an exception? AP exams are only given in the spring. They are not given in the fall. So a student would take US History honors in the fall and take AP US History in the spring, and they have to take the AP exam and the EOC exam in the spring. So that is why that course is an exception. As I shared with you last time, we are providing theory to practice. As I shared with the middle school presentation, we have finished Cohort Two, and we have started Cohort Three. And remember- And remember, that is open to all of our math teachers. When we started that particular class three years ago, we targeted specifically on algebra because our scores coming out of COVID had taken that dip. So I'm happy to say that we are continuing to have math teachers take advantage of that particular class. And again, it goes over specific best-practice strategies that our teachers should be using with our students. And it's not just remember that they're getting theory. Our math coach actually goes out and observes the teacher and then has a coaching conversation with the teacher. And that happens throughout the entire year because that's how long the class actually takes to get through. Also, we continued with our formative assessment reviews for each of our EOC courses at the high school. And of course, we are now giving our first benchmark in our EOC classes this week, actually. They started on Monday. When we did that review last year, instead of just talking about the data, we added a professional learning component. So we talked about the strengths of the data, perhaps weaknesses of the data. We also talked about how can we use better strategies to impact areas that we're struggling. So teachers left with a teaching strategy they could go back and implement within the next day. Also, our Protected Professional Learning Planning, PEP as we refer to it. Remember, last year, we changed it up a little bit, and it is specifically for collaboration and planning purposes, and we are continuing that into this year. So teachers do not have any meetings during that time. That Wednesday late start for students, our teachers start on time, they're able to meet with their peers in their department. They can also meet virtually across the district. If I'm the only one in my school that's teaching, let's say, psychology, I can meet with a teacher at another school and collaborate and plan. Our principals have been advocates of the change we made in PEP, and so we're continuing with that change this year. If you remember last time we were together and we talked about we were transitioning from science standards for 2014, we are doing the same thing with biology. Last year was our transition year. This year, we will have a new EOC biology exam. So you will see scores next year based on a test that we have not given before. During PEP, we specifically worked with our biology teachers around the transitioning and also giving them professional support to implement those standards as we transitioned. We're also in year three of our individual learning time. This is where students can be accelerated based on their academic needs and their academic data, and also a time to go back and reteach things that students perhaps did not master. And now I'll pass it on to Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore, and also thank you to our wonderful high school principals who support inclusive environments for all of their students. As Dr. Coleman shared with you during our last meeting, all students are assessed. So from our students in our resource classrooms to our students that have more significant cognitive disabilities, they are assessed as well. That's why it's important that we have brought in one of our master teachers who's retired. She's coming in and working with our teachers who teach our high school credential program. And in that program, our students receive a modified curriculum in the four content areas because they are also required to take a alternate Algebra I end-of-course test, a biology end-of-course test, all the content areas. But another component, just so you are aware, of the high school credential program, we are focusing on providing them the necessary skills, whether it's work or some type of vocational program in the community after they leave, but we are ensuring that they're ready for those end-of-course tests. I shared with you the last time that we are bringing in a consultant to work with us with co-teaching because the best opportunity that we can provide for our students that are in our resource programs are for their teachers to push in to the actual Algebra I classroom, the biology classroom, and collaborate with those content experts to provide that instruction, and that they will provide the support that those students need to be successful. And then finally, we're ensuring that when the students go to what we generally call support lab or resource time, that that time is being spent working on supporting them in their content courses. It is not a homework time. We're trying to make sure that we're closing that math gap, that reading gap for them. If they are a grade level below, we need to get them up to the grade level that they need to be on. So those are some of the strategies that we're using at the high school level to work on our academic achievement. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Coleman.
All right, so the final assessment that we'll cover this evening probably looks new to you all because it is, and it's the South Carolina Career Readiness Assessment. We have had in state law for many years that in the third year of every student's high school experience, they must take a career readiness assessment. What's been challenging is this will be our third different career readiness assessment in three years. This is no fault of the state. They follow a procurement process, same as we do by putting out a bid for a testing vendor. Those bids have been challenged every year, and unfortunately, and mostly unfortunately for students, it's led to us switching tests every year. I'm very hopeful that we will settle on this assessment so that we can ensure that our kids are prepared and know the best way to move forward in taking this test. So again, it's the third year of high school for every student in the state of South Carolina, and with this new assessment, there are four components. There's a math assessment, a data assessment, a reading assessment, and a soft skills assessment. And I remember the first year that we gave Work Keys, and I'm going to be very honest with you, people really underestimated how hard a career readiness assessment would be. Full disclosure, I worked in a department full of people who had PhDs in math, and I'm going to be real honest with you, we struggled on the math component. It is not your standard math. It is read tech, think about putting together furniture from IKEA and reading a manual, right? This is a lot what this assessment is like, is going through technical manuals, doing technical math. It is not an easy assessment. The other big switch that we've had, as opposed to what we had with Work Keys and WIN, instead of students earning a certificate that's platinum, gold, silver, or bronze, we now have switched to a level 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So when we look at our results, you'll notice there's only going to be one year on here because we have been told by the vendor that we cannot compare it to either of the two previous assessments that we've given for career readiness. So really, we're kind of, this is our baseline. This is the ground level that we're starting at for this year. We can see that 70% of our students did receive a credential, and you'll see the breakdown of what level they earned and if they did not have a credential as well. We're below the state average, and that is something that we are actively going to be working towards this next year. And to talk more about that, I will ask Mrs. Kane to come to the podium.
Good evening to the board. Dr. Coleman did all of my homework for me, so I only have to share that with the new assessment, the grading or scoring has changed to be reflective of the 1 through 5. And I don't know if you know this, but this test prior to, this test, the prior test, was based on the vendors' identified certification levels. This new test is aligned to the Department of Labor's ONET, which means that it is directly aligned to the skill sets for employment. And I'm going to give you the numbers, for instance, for a 5. Job scores in those job zones are reflective of education and training, so a 5 indicates extensive preparation and grad school. A 4 is considerable preparation and a four-year degree. 3 is medium preparation, that's usually an associate's degree, on-the-job training, vocational or trade school. A 2 is some preparation, normally associated with a high school diploma. And a 1 is little to no preparation, and is usually a high school diploma or GED. What we have done this year for this testing is we've implemented the WIN curriculum. That training was provided to the CTE department chair and the work-based learning coordinators for each of the high schools because they are the ones primarily dealing with the students when it's relating to employment. What the WIN curriculum does is it allows students to practice pre-test, identify through diagnostics where their areas of growth are, and provide them continuing activities and lessons and learning in those areas. So the reason we decided to go through the CTE teachers, and I hope my CTE teachers are listening, is because CTE is where the content course information, that is where our students go to demonstrate their knowledge, is in CTE. So those courses will be using that time either with bell ringers or instructions. There are even some guided activities that students can do self-directed, and they will be working on that throughout the year in preparation for their new assessment in the spring. So any questions for me? Thank you.
Whoops. Thank you, Ms. Kane.
All right, so in closing, we have to step back to look at the whole picture. We've given you lots of information tonight, lots of data. EOCs are continuing to move in the positive direction. Our high schools show rebound as we work towards pre-pandemic recovery. One of the things high schools continue to struggle with is teacher shortages and staffing. You saw that in the confounding variables when we talked to you earlier and also tonight. When you have teacher shortages, principals have to decide who to put where. They have tough decisions to make. Where is the highest need? So food for thought as we close tonight, where does a principal place the induction teachers? Where does a principal place the international teachers new to the states? What is a principal do I do when I lose a teacher in the first weeks of school? What do I do as a principal, or where as a principal, do I put my long-term guest teachers? Where do I place my most highly significant and effective veteran teachers? These are things that principals have to think about every day. Think about how these things impact our high schools and impact the district. That concludes our presentation tonight.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Gregory, Dr. Coleman, Mrs. Atkinson, Mrs. Davis, and Mrs. Kane. Board members, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, and thank you all so much for the presentation. I just have one question, and I asked this at our last meeting as well. What role do our teachers play when we're putting together these academic action plans? How are they participating in letting us know what it is that they need so that we can develop a program not only that they participate in, but they can buy into?
That's a great question, Ms. Agostini. During PEP is when they have their time specifically, that they collaborate with their peers. So if there's something they need, they let their assistant principal for instruction know, and if it's something that the district office can provide support for, then we do, or if it's someone else in their school that can provide support there. So there's conversations when we are working on our plan for the academics. We take it back to the principal rep. The principal rep then takes it to the other four principals, and then it goes back to the school for them to discuss, and it works in that way.
Board members, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Spor.
I wanted some clarity in PEP. I saw a statement that said that the academics team meets with teachers every Wednesday or at one high school. Can you tell me, is this rotating, or is it, are they, is this time being taken up with district personnel every Wednesday? Do they actually have that time to plan all the other things that you stated?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, we put that in place during PEP. So like, the first Wednesday, we would be at Spring Valley. The second Wednesday, we would be at Westwood. The third Wednesday, we would be at Blythewood. The fourth Wednesday, we would be at Ridgeview. And then we would start with Richland Northeast. So we would be at each high school one Wednesday a month, and it was on a rotation. So they had the other four Wednesdays to collaborate with their peers or across the district.
And that's just during PEP?
And that's just during PEP.
There are other times. I mean, they are constantly in schools, working with teachers on a daily basis.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Just wanted to make sure you understood that. They didn't start to do it, Watson.
Okay. I think that answers my questions, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the back-to-school report. Dr. Moore.
Chairman Trapp, trustees, colleagues, I am very proud tonight to tell you that this has been the best back-to-school report that I have ever delivered as superintendent. Granted, it is my first, but it is the best. So what I would ask is that you please temper your expectations because it is also my first back-to-school report as superintendent. So let's dive right into some numbers. Here is our total enrollment as of today. 28,853 students. So we are almost at 29,000 students. That means our district is growing, and we're very excited about that. The reason that's so important is because that means parents see us as their first choice because we are their best choice, and so we're proud of that number. As you can see also on the slide, there is a breakdown of our demographics. We are a minority-majority district, and we're proud of that because we're here to service all the students, each student that we have the privilege to educate. So I'm not going to read numbers to you because we can all read, but I do want to go ahead and let you know, here's our breakdown of our student population. As you can see, we're a little over 13,000 for our elementary, a little over 6,000 for middle, high is a little over 9,000. And our students speak 56 different languages, which I believe we should embrace because being able to speak multiple languages in today's global economy is definitely an asset for every one of our students. Here is a breakdown of our multilingual students. 6% of our population speak multiple languages. 13.5% have IEPs, and as we've talked about and you've heard in the two previous presentations, 61%, over 61% of our students are considered in poverty, which directly impacts, as you've already heard, absenteeism and academic achievement. Does not mean that those students are not capable of achieving and excelling and doing great and wonderful things. What it means is that we have to look at how we provide support to those students differently. Because when a student misses the bus and they don't have the opportunity to call a parent that can leave their job, because if they leave their job, they'll get fired, to come pick them up and bring them to school, that student is now missing instruction. It just means we have to think about things differently. So let's look at where our students in poverty are. As you can see, the purple dots represent students that are in poverty, and they're across our entire county that we support. So as you can see, this is consistently permeated across all of the areas for our school district. Please note on this slide that our five-year trend, we have increased our poverty rate by 20% within five years. That's significant, and the impact that it has on our schools as well as the level of support that we need to provide to our students. Poverty has become one of the major indicators for academic achievement, not for the student's fault. It's not the student's fault. It's not necessarily the parent's fault either. I believe parents do the best that they can do, and they send us the best that they have, which are their children. It's a question of then, how do we meet those children's needs? And that's where we, as the board and superintendent, have to come together, look at our policies, look at how we are allocating resources to better serve our community. That's why this is so important. So mobility, and you heard Dr. Coleman talk about this. We don't always look at that, but I can tell you, as a high school principal of a school that had a very high mobility rate, it directly impacts academic outcomes for students. Because we get students in, we don't know where that student's Because we get students in, we don't know where that student's at, and then we're trying to keep that, move that student forward, but close gaps that the student may bring with them. That student may have not been in school for the last two years. That student may have come from a different country where they speak a different language, but in that country, they don't have to go to school. But then they come to the United States, and we do say, you have to go to school. And so how do we get that student across the line with that critical component of a diploma, which we know is the key that unlocks opportunity? So this is a very important piece of data that we are currently tracking within our district, is the mobility rate. And it's, it's high at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. People are moving. And as Dr. Coleman said, and Ms. Cobb said, a lot of our students that are in poverty tend to move more frequently for a variety of reasons. We know the housing costs have gone up significantly in Columbia. As a new resident, I can personally attest to that. So one of our other major parts of our community, of course, is Fort Jackson. And as all of you know, we did have a wonderful opportunity this past week to celebrate our partnership with them with our new MOU. But it's important to understand the impact of the military population on our schools. So as you can see, here's a breakdown. And I want to clarify some of the terms there so that people watching online may not fully understand. When we say active duty not deployed, that means that soldier and their family are here. The soldier is probably working at Fort Jackson or in the recruiting battalion, maybe in the reserves, but that soldier is here versus soldiers that are active duty that are deployed, meaning they are now, a family is here, but the soldier is serving somewhere outside of the United States. So that could be anywhere in the world where the mission requires. We also have to keep in mind that we do have reservists and we have our National Guard. And so they do deploy also, which means they're away from their work because they're serving as an active-duty military member. But twelve point five percent of all of our students are military-affiliated students. One in five of all military children in South Carolina attend Richland II School District. And we're very proud of the fact that we were the first Purple Star School District in the state of South Carolina. The schools that have the majority of our military personnel are Blythewood High School, Muller Road, and Catawba Trail Elementary. Now, we love our military students, and I know those principals, Matt would stand up and say, we love our military families, those students are great, but that goes into the mobility rate. It impacts that when those, when those students' families receive orders and they are moving. And so we just have to be sensitive to that. Let's transition now to our vacancies. I know you get a report, every board, every week, not every week, every month, on our vacancies. But just like every other school district across the nation, we are currently struggling also. Now, we are in better shape than we were last year, and I salute Dr. Franklin and his team for the work that they've done, and I commend the board for the work that you did in putting bonuses in place, recruitment bonuses in place. But we still have a need. We need sixty-five certified teachers and eighty-six classified personnel. That breakdown there, as you can see, is amongst our high school, middle, and elementary schools. And keep in mind, as Dr. Coleman talked about, especially at the high school level, it becomes certification challenges to go along with that. And those critical shortage areas of math, science, and special education impact all of our schools throughout all three levels. Here's an update on our non-class, our certified but non-classroom teachers. Because we know mental health is critical for our students, that's why we need to have psychologists. But there's a shortage of psychologists, not just at school districts, but in the surrounding community. But we are doing everything that we can, partnering with our local universities, trying to bring in interns, and as we bring those in, we, we celebrate them. Anyone that has heard me speak has heard me talk about the need for people to come and work for us. I even talk to people when I'm in the Walmart. I do recruit all the time because we need certain people, we need qualified people to work with our students. Now, let's talk about some facts that I know you're really, really interested. I know that other stuff was important, but here are the things that I know. And Mr. Anderson has told me, these are critical pieces of data that you want to see every year, so I made sure that we included them in the presentation. Because as you have gone out and seen those spectacular floors in our buildings, you probably did not realize how much wax it takes to make those floors shine. Two thousand three hundred and fifty gallons of wax. Now, we're chuckling, but I can tell you, as a former high school principal, my head custodian took pride in that building. That was like his own house, and he loved it when his floors looked like glass. He would get upset about three months after school because then school has started because the floors weren't as shiny, still look good, but not as shiny. So that's where all that wax goes. I know a lot of times we get feedback about bathrooms and the condition of our bathrooms, but please note that we stay on top of that. Will's team, Mr. Anderson's team, is constantly looking at the level of services that we provide in our restrooms. Because we've replaced one hundred and sixty-nine soap dispensers, sixty-four toilet paper dispensers, eighteen paper towel dispensers since the first of July of this year, and we've only been in school for almost nine weeks, and we've already done that. We use three hundred and thirty gallons of hand soap, and my personal favorite, coming out of COVID, twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-six rolls of toilet paper per month. Scott Papers loves us. We have fed, to this date, over, every year, every day, I should say, we have fed seven thousand one hundred and twenty-three students breakfast and over fourteen thousand lunch. We do that every single day. So I want to say thank you to our partner, Sedesco, for the work that they do every single day. Because we know that if our students' bodies are fueled with the proper nutrition, they are going to be academically successful. I had the privilege this past week to spend time at Fort Jackson and learn about what I call the New Soft Army. Remember, I'm an old-school army. And what I learned from them, I have to clarify that. What I learned from them is that it's not bad to be the New Soft Army because they spend a lot of time helping students understand, soldiers understand peak performance. What does it take? Just like our Olympic athletes get training on how to be the best athlete they can be and have peak performance. That's what the Army is doing now, and they're providing nutritionists and dieticians, they have physical therapists, they do sports medicine, they're doing resiliency training. All of these things are important, and nutrition is the foundation of that. So we're doing a great job with that. Our buses, and as a science person, you know, we got to throw a little science in there for everybody's benefit. So think about this. Our buses travel two hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-four miles in just the first twenty days of school. Now, the distance from the earth, remember, I'm a science teacher, so I need everybody to pay attention. There might be a quiz at the end, just saying. The distance from the earth to the moon is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-five miles. So quick calculation. I know you're doing the math, but we don't have time to waste, so I'm going to give you the answer. If I asked you how many times we have traveled to the moon with our buses, it's eight point two trips to the moon with the number of students that we are transporting safely every single day. Whew, that's a lot. Now, at the end of this, why is all of this so important to be included in our back-to-school update? Well, first and foremost, it is because my goal is that Richland II School District is our parents' first choice for their students because we are the best choice for their students. So I know you're wondering, how are we going to accomplish this goal? Well, it starts by using our five foundational pillars of community and family engagement, teaching and learning, culture and climate, human capital, and finance and operations. In partnership with our community, we will empower our students to discover their potential and prepare for a successful future, which is why we included the career readiness data as a part of our high school update. This is new, but it's important because if we want our students to be future-ready, we have to equip them with the skills that they need to do that. We are a purpose-driven, future-ready district. So our students are connected, they are engaged, they are supported, and because of that, they are achieving. So as a result, we are a parent's best choice, and therefore, we are a parent's first choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I know you're still doing the math. You can trust us on that.
I'm still thinking of the bus driving to the moon. It's a little concerning.
We're future-ready, Mr. Trapp. Future-ready.
Any questions? All right. Well, we will move on to our agenda for next meeting. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for the October 10th meeting. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our meeting is scheduled for October the 10th. We will begin at 5:30 with our call to order, move then to approval of the agenda. Once the agenda is approved, we will then move to executive session, which will then include our employment recommendations and certified releases, student appeals, and public, once we've concluded, executive session will move to public session again, and hopefully at 6:30 or around that time. Once we come back into public session, we'll have our inspirational moment as well as our pledge of allegiance. We will then move to section five, which is our consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meetings, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We will then have our public participation, followed by voting on executive session items. So that would include employment recommendations and certified releases, as well as student appeals, and any other items that were discussed in executive session that needed a vote. We will then move to new business, no action. We will have a legislative update by our board legislative point of contact, and we will have a staffing update. Next, we will have the agenda items for the next meeting, where we will review the draft agenda for the October 24th, 2023 meeting. If needed, a second public participation. If needed, a second executive sessions, executive session, and if needed, a vote on the executive session items, followed by board and superintendent comments, and then adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the October 10th, 2023 agenda or to a future agenda? All right, we will, all right, we will move to our board and superintendent comments. We'll start with Mrs. Nash.
Well, happy fall, everyone. I want to thank everyone for being here and everybody that's watching online. To all our high school principals, thank you guys so much for being in the room with us. I want to say congrats. We've highlighted our amazing JROTC programs here in the district often, so I want to give a special congratulations to the Spring Valley Raiders who won first place overall in the male division and coed division won third place out of ten schools. So kudos to those leaders of those teams, Asher Infante and Hayden Harki, who I know personally are amazing, amazing young men. Congratulations to all the Merit Scholars. I spoke about this in the last meeting, but tomorrow is meet at the pole day. It's student-initiated, student-led prayer around the poles before school. So to all you students out there, here's a great opportunity for you to, to pray, be and pray for your schools. So also on Saturday, the Convoy of Hope is happening Saturday, September 30th, at 10 a.m. at Columbia Mall. I know my church is participating in that at Grace Life, and that's a really big deal, especially when you hear about the poverty that we talked about this evening that is spreading across our district. There are going to be many churches and organizations that'll be there. There will be events for all the kids, as well as community services, health services, veteran services, family portraits, groceries, haircuts, jobs, and career services, and lunch. And there's some other things, too, that I might have missed, but that's going to be a great event, and it starts at 10 a.m. on Saturday. And then lastly, over the next few, the next weeks, the Safety and Security Committee will be providing public with updates of our meetings and events, and we're excited to get, to really expound upon what we did last year. We kind of started late in the year, but we're really excited about some of the things that we're going to be doing, looking forward to joining again and working with our student representative and our parent representatives and staff. Lastly, to Principal Brandon Ross for the great video with that kissing of the horse. That is very brave, but congratulations to you and all the students at Muller Road for your fundraising efforts.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to the attendance and the academics team for all of your hard work. I follow you on Twitter. I follow our teachers, some of our teachers in schools on Twitter, and it's always great just to see the amazing things that are happening. Thank you so much to our high school leaders that are here for all the hard work that you do for our students every day and in our community. Again, I love to see everything that you all are posting and sharing and what's happening with our students. I had an opportunity to attend the Cube Conference two weeks ago, and I want to say it was the, it was amazing. I actually learned to look at equity from a totally different perspective. I know a lot of times when we hear equity, the first thing we think about is race, but they talked about equity in our HR practices, equity in our staffing, equity in access to resources. And so I am just really appreciative of being able to be in a room with people and have very conversations on some topics. Also, I'm very interested just to make sure that our policies are not creating boundaries or impeding on our students from receiving a high-quality education. I gained a better understanding of my role as a fiduciary, generative, and strategic board member, and what intrigued me the most was the culture of this conference. I saw school board members, they were dressed in their tees alike. It was togetherness. It was a sense of belonging and pride for the work that we do. I heard story after story of boards and superintendents working together as partners to combat challenges for students by bringing various initiatives. Board members, yes, board members at the seat, a part of committees and having discussions with students to be able to bring change in their district and to improve student outcomes. We heard from students. We saw students at the conference. We saw students and boards engaged in conversations. There is even a district, I think it's Prince George, they actually have students on their school board. And so I was very impressed. We even had a student panel who shared their perspective of why they were going into the field of education because they were a part of a dynamic grow-your-own program. And our data is saying a lot, and it's telling a story of Richland II. And so if good education is available at one school, it should be available at all of our schools. And finally, I want to encourage our community for us to join together as partners, whether you're a leader, a pastor, a business, or an individual, let's be proactive. There's a lot of things that are happening in our community, and it's telling a story that many of us don't like and that we don't care to hear for, but the news is sharing a story about what's happening in northeast Columbia and all over. Our safety committee had a summit this past May, and they talked about so many different ways that we can combat the things that are happening in our community. I'd like for us to be a partner in these conversations and in these initiatives and work together with all leaders, elected officials, so that we can combat what we're seeing not only in our schools, but in our communities. And also, one of my, a friend of mine, her daughter's on the Ridgeview Band, and she sent me an invitation to, they're having a competition, so I wanted to just share it. It's the 2023 Tournaments of Bands, and it's sponsored by Ridgeview High School Blazer Band. It's on October the 14th, and it's going to be held at the Blythewood High School Football Stadium. Board members, they're going to be sending us an email, asking us to be there to possibly present awards to some of the winners. So thank you all so much for all you do. God bless Richland II and have an amazing rest of your week.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Scott.
Thank you so much. Want to start first with saying thank you to the high school principals for being here. I know you guys have so much that you could be doing, so I appreciate you taking your time to spend it with us this afternoon with with this evening, late into the evening. So thank you so much, and I look forward to visiting your schools if I have not already been there. So thank you again. Also, to the student speaker today, students, thank you so much. I think it's so important when we have our students get involved because I always tell students, your voice matters, and we need you at the table. So thank you so much for sharing. The only thing about that is I went to visit one of the elementary schools, and the teacher said, oh, this is one of our board members. So she said, well, what is a board member? And once I began to share with her, she said, well, do you have some paper? I want to share some things with you. And I went, uh-oh. So I think that's great. I think that's great. That's just a growing leader. And of course, her teacher looked at me. I'm like, it's okay, it's okay. So it's great to hear from our students. Wasn't expecting that, but it's great to hear from our students. Also, I want to just say thank you to Dr. Moore and Kelsey Carter and Dr. Grant for the MOU. I think that was so awesome to witness the MOU signing and the partnership. We've always had a partnership with Fort Jackson, but to see it to expand to a level of what we now have, I think that's so remarkable. And people are watching, school districts are watching. So we are leading the way again like I'm used to Richland, too, leading. And then the other thing, to the presenters, thank you so very much. It was very detailed. It's given us some icing on the cake. Also, we're getting ready to take a slice of that cake and make sure it's what we see that is matching up with what we're doing. So thank you so much for that. And really, on a sad note, want to send my prayers and condolences out to the Richland One community and families on the loss of those three students. If anyone follow me on social media, my hashtag is 29203. I'm a product of 29203. Will always be there. My family lives there. I grew up, graduated from schools in Richland School District One. So my heart is not only with Richland School District Two, but it's also a part of me, Richland School District One. So I just want to send my prayers and my condolences out to the family. And although we're two different districts, we're student-centered. So when something happens to Richland One students, they're part of our family. And I think once we realize that we're not separate school districts, we're one big family because they talked about mobility. We have so many students transitioning from Richland One to come to Richland Two, Richland Two go back to Richland One. So we're a family. So my condolences goes out to the school board members, the superintendent, the family, and the entire community of 29203. Thank you so much, and everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. This is Porter.
Thank you all for attending this meeting. Thank you for our leaders in the room as well. I just like to say, something that I hear often is that this generation, that they are something else or that they're different, right? But one thing that I will say is, our students, they continue to impress me. They are strong. They want that, and this is part of our core values, they want that sense of belonging, and they will do whatever it takes to be a part of that situation. And I just, I love that they take initiative to speak up, whether they like things or dislike things, and that they're so bold. One common theme that I saw tonight was growth. To our student Sam Wise, he discussed growth. Our academics team shared lots of data, and I saw a lot of growth in the data that was presented. And again, that's one of our core values, continuous improvement. And so that really was something that resonated with me. Also, thank you for sending me to the CUBE conference. I also attended with Ms. Washington, and I won't repeat anything that she said because she said it so beautifully, and it was a fantastic conference. I recommend that everyone go at least once. Also, in the words of Sonia Sora Major, "It is important for all of us to appreciate where we came from or come from and how that history has really shaped us in ways that we might not understand." Happy National Hispanic Heritage Month, and may it come to. Also, thank you to my colleagues for your nomination for the Delegate Assembly and as the nomination for Region Eight Director. I hope that I can make you proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. This is Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to start off by thanking Sam Wise for his inspiring smile, his enthusiastic words, and sharing his story. Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing the former board officers this evening. With that, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Richland Two Chief Instructional Officer, Nancy Gregory. I had to crank my head to make sure you were still here, who stepped up to the plate to take the position of interim superintendent in January until we were able to hire Dr. Moore. Mrs. Gregory, your strong foundation, stability, leadership, passion, and commitment for Richland Two are so appreciated. It was my honor to sit beside you. And then finally, I'm going to recognize a group that doesn't get recognized very often, but boy, they sure worked hard for us this spring, the Board AV Support Group. Tony Kenyon, Matt Crosby, Brian Cowley, Matt Davenport, Denny Newman, and Will Ames. I really appreciate your efforts, especially when we are not able to be here to you, for you to connect us telephonically, but also when we really can't be here, the availability that we have through the live stream and YouTube. So as a board member, I can go back and watch the meetings repeatedly so I know what happened. So thank you all for all you do. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you know, I always like to highlight and celebrate the wonderful things that are happening in our district with our great staff and our awesome students. But I'm going to start off with thanking the chamber because I had the privilege today to give the opening remarks at the Minority Business and Entrepreneur Meeting for the chamber today. It's always great to talk to our community partners and connect with them so that we can continue to better support our students. So I also would like to celebrate today some purpose-driven educators of excellence. So Gabriella Sabo is a 20-year-plus math teacher at Richland Northeast High School, who has consistently been named Most Influential Teacher amongst the school's academic scholars. Watch as she talks about two of her former students. The first is the class of 2023 Saludatorian who dedicated his graduation speech to her. Think about that. He had a captive audience, and he picked this teacher to focus on. And then another, whose entire life, granted, it's short, but at this point, it was his entire life and how she changed that life when he walked into her classroom. So let's watch this video.
I came here in 2000. I was a Fulbright teacher previously. I came as an international teacher of this school, and I guess I'm going to retire from here. I think I'm doing anything special. I just think I'm teaching math the way it's supposed to be taught. It is a hard subject. I think as hard as I'm trying to be, it's a combination of personality and getting to know the kids and create those relationships.
My name is Jackson Matet, and it is an honor to stand before all of you today as the Saludatorian of the Rich Northeast Class of 2023. One teacher in particular, where this was especially the case, was my pre-calculus teacher, Ms. Sabo. Ms. Sabo was very loud and strict in our online classroom meetings. So I was surprised to see a very short and kind-hearted woman when I walked into her class for the first time. I always saw Ms. Sabo on Mondays since I had math on A-days. But on the following Wednesday, I returned to virtual learning. I came up with the plan to attend in-person learning with my non-designated cohort of students. Yes, you heard that right. I snuck into school. When I arrived in Ms. Sabo's class on Wednesday morning, she went along with my antics and pretended she didn't realize that I was supposed to be in her class. I continued to show up to her class on Wednesdays for the next couple of weeks until the district shifted from the hybrid learning schedule to the full-time in-person learning. I'm sure all of you could reflect on a similar relationship that has helped to shape you as a person and helped you realize your potential or purpose. For me, my purpose is to attend NC State to double Civil Engineering, a major that has a heavy concentration in math. I attribute my love and passion for mathematics back to my sophomore-year pre-calculus class, where the smallest teacher made the biggest impact on my life.
Of course, the moment he said my name, I started crying. And the kids came to me the next day, all of them. I said, did you cry? Did you cry? I said, no, I didn't. He came and asked me for a recommendation. I said, sure, I just need your resume. He sent me an email. He said, you're the one who made me change my career. I said, Nathan, you can do anything. He said, no, I want to do math. You're the best that I ever had.
Isn't that awesome? When we think about the impact that we have every single day on a child's life, we literally can change that child's life, what we do as educators. And everyone in this room is an educator. Just because we don't necessarily have the title of teacher does not mean that we are not educating students because students watch what we do. But we can't stop with just one great teacher. We have another great teacher for you to learn about. This is a fabulous, award-winning teacher because this is our 2023-2024 District Teacher of the Year for Richland School District Two. And that teacher is Will Epps. Will is an innovative science teacher. Notice a theme, math, science, just saying, at Blythewood High School and the creator of the incredible Bengal biodiesel program. So I, along with a group of district leaders, had the honor to make the surprise announcement last week at Blythewood High School. So I got to do like what you see with the prize patrol. It was awesome. So let's take a look at Mr. Epps receiving his award.
It's an honor to be recognized. It's an honor to be selected. I know we had a great group of teachers, so I'm excited to work with them more.
Take me back to where this dream started. Is it going through your head right now or how far you've come with this program?
No, we've come a long way. We've come a long way. I hope, I hope we can continue to make the transformational change in our students that we've been able to do and just make it bigger and better.
Why do you think this has worked?
It's about the students. It's honest, it's sincere. You know, this works because students want it to work. This is something that they need. You know, we need to invest our time and energy in our students, and I think they respond when we do that. Really, if you're honest with the kids and if you bring them into the problem-solving process, then great things can happen.
So first and foremost, Mr. Epps, congratulations.
Thank you.
Job well done, and we're very excited for you. Can you tell me what this means to you?
I'm just honored. I'm honored to be selected. We had a great group of teachers. Really, it's crazy to think that I'm selected to represent all the teachers in this wonderful district.
Now, as a science teacher, speaking to another science teacher, what makes this even more special?
It's, it's really nice to have, you know, science represented. You know, we try to bond together, you know, have that. You know, it's all, you know, we're just looking at the world and trying to make it a better place.
And we know that our students have to be future-ready. They're going to compete in a world where the jobs that they are applying don't currently exist. But what I saw in your classroom was teaching kids how to problem-solve through problem-based learning. Tell me about what that actually looks like in your classroom and why it's so important.
Well, I try to bring the kids along with all the problems. You know, the, one of the great things for me is that I don't have to plan the problems. They just happen, right?
Oh, that's right. Problems are all around us, right? You call them challenges.
Right, so absolutely. And as long as we have kids come in and, you know, you know, I can tell the kids, like, all right, let's figure this out. And they're like, okay, so how do we figure this out? I'm like, no, 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 like, let's, let's all figure it out together, and let's work through the process together. And they can see, and they gain the confidence they need to be successful after high school.
Why is confidence so important?
It's essential. Because like you said, the job market's going to change. Everything's going to change. You know, the jobs that they might have in five, 10 years' time might not exist today. And so if they have the confidence to say like, And so if they have the confidence to say, like, well, I've done this hard and challenging thing, I can do that again.
What would your message be to other people about your experience?
Trust our kids. Bring them in on the process, the good, the bad, the ugly, everything. You know, they're going to grow up to be adults that have to solve problems, and what a better way to do that than education.
So we are very excited, yes. And Mr. Epps' principal is very excited that he will be representing our school district and at the state level. We believe, Matt and I believe, that he will be the South Carolina Teacher of the Year. When we broke that news to Mr. Epps that he would be competing at that level, and if he was selected, he would be out of his classroom for a year, he broke out in a sweat and started to panic, because the thought of leaving his classroom for a year was not something he was prepared for. And he said he started planning immediately if that happened. So that's what we're believing is going to transpire, but we're very proud of his efforts and the work that he's doing every single day. Now, it's because we have great educators in the classroom that we also can see the results of that with our students. We are very proud to say we have 11 Richland School District Two students who are showing exceptional academic ability, and one of our board members already mentioned this, because they are competing for national merit scholarships. They are among 16,000 semifinalists in the 69th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Now, over 1.3 million high school juniors in about 21,000 high schools earned the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2022 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as the initial screen, screening of the program entrant. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of U.S. high school seniors includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. So Richland Two's National Merit Scholarship semifinalists are displayed up on the screen and with their names. I am not going to try to pronounce all of the names that are up there, because names are important, and I don't want to mess someone's name up. So just know that if you'd like more information, they are on our website with the proper spelling of their names on the website. But we want to honor and celebrate those students. So give them a big round of applause. And I just have to call out one student in particular, because this student was on my interview panel. She also came to the Health Advisory Council meeting. She's actively involved, and that's Ms. Ava Phelps. So Ava, as well as all of your colleagues, congratulations on a job well done. Now, it was already mentioned by Dr. Scott, the MOU, but last week, we locked in a crucial Richland Two partnership, and that is with the United States Army and their Fort Jackson soldiers, who help our district in so many ways. For example, I was at RNE's football game on Friday night. They did win. They let them come back, but they did win. The individuals working the sideline were from Fort Jackson, the battalion that has adopted the school. They not only worked the sidelines, but they provided the hot dogs and hamburgers for students. That's what they do, just to be supportive of the school. Now, General Kelly and I wanted to make sure that we continue this relationship, because if you know anything about the military, if you're doing a really good job like General Kelly, what they do is they move you, because they promote you and they give you more responsibility. But we wanted to make sure that this relationship stays in, in effect beyond both of our ten years. Of course, mine will be longer than his, because I plan to be here for a very long time, and the Army won't be moving me anymore, so. But General Kelly may not. So it was very important. So we have our military representative, Fred, back there. Stand up, Fred, wave. He helped make sure that happened. He was instrumental in getting, working with Kelsey and Dr. Grant on making sure that our MOU got done. And while General Kelly could not be there because he was called away, he sends his definite support of the MOU. So we are very excited about that and just excited to have our continued partnership with Fort Jackson. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. What I would like to do tonight is wish a happy 18th birthday to a Blythewood High School senior, who just happens to be my niece. So happy 18th birthday to Katie Benson. She's really a great kid, but, and, and of course, I'm the greatest uncle in the world, so that's, that's why I'm, but the reason, one of the reasons I do this is because it occurred to me today, when we were singing her happy birthday, that she's turning 18. And these, these students, we think of them as children, because they are children, but by the time they're seniors, the vast majority of them walk across our stage as adults. And it really struck me that just, you know, they really are leaving our district and going straight out there, like it says right there, "Purpose-driven, future-ready." I really feel strongly, and I'm so great, grateful that our principals, our high school principals are here tonight. It's really good to see you, you all, because you're, you're the ones that are taking them on that final step of the journey. And I'm really encouraged by some of the presentations we had here tonight. My only concern is that we, we have them in the classroom. We've really got to do what we can to make sure these kids are able to get to school, because I think once they're there, we're doing a really good job with them. And I hope that we continue to improve on that, and that when these children cross our stages as adults, that they're ready to go out there and conquer the world. And I wish them all the best. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Was that Ms. Washington? Mrs. Agostini.
I, I move to adjourn the September 26th, 2023 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Agostini has made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and Mrs., Dr. Scott has seconded it. Let's do a hand vote. All in favor, please raise your, all right, the vote is six, ready to go, and, and we are adjourned.